County Commission Meeting, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is just a reminder to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Hiebarger. And unfortunately Craig and Carol are both gone today, so if anyone needs a listening device, I'm not sure what we do. So, we would figure it out though if we had to. That takes us to routine business. First item would be consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is to approve commission meeting minutes from October 22nd, 2019.
So moved, second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is bills to be paid in the amount of $545,343.05.
Pay the bills.
Second. Motion second, any comments?
Madam Chair. Today's bills include $200,000 transferred to Metro Communications, which is a fairly routine thing, but when you take that off, our bills are only 345,000. And additionally, we had, I noticed, eight charges to Jefferson Lyons for taking people someplace else, I guess. Just thought I'd throw that in there.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not? We had a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. First item are reports. We have the Human Services 2019 Third Quarter Report from Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties. I noticed that Lori is here, are there any questions on that report? Okay. Next item is kind of a continuation of auditors' accounting reports that we started receiving last week. Last week we were brought current through the end of 2018, and this week we have auditors that account with the treasurer, county treasurer, for January 2019, February 2019, and March 2019. Any comments or questions about those reports?
I'm glad to have them in.
Thank you. We anticipate, I believe, getting caught up here in the next few weeks, I believe. So, okay, thank you. So that takes us to item five, personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve routine action?
Second.
Second, any comments, questions? Commissioner Barth?
I just noticed there aren't very many, and there are no anniversaries, so this must be a slow month for hiring people over the last 20, 30, 40 years.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, so we had a motion in a second on personnel actions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are abatements, and there are none. Item seven, notices and requests, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices. This is the first reading and authorize the auditor to publish notice of public hearing on November 19th, 2019, for the adoption of the 2018 International Building Code, 2018 International Residential Code, and 2018 International Existing Code. Good morning, Kevin.
Morning. Kevin Huckman, County Planning Department. As was just stated, this is the first reading to publish hearing. For every three years, the Minnehaha County and other small governments do go through building code updates. And this last addition is a 2018 International Building Code. We adopted the 2015 building codes in 2016, so we're usually about a year lag. The staff has worked on this with the city of Sioux Falls. Typically what we've done is let the city pass their version. We look at what they do and copy a lot of that and take some of our own little nuances throughout the code to fit to Minnehaha County and the rural area. As you stated, this would include the 2018 International Building Code, the 2018 International Residential Code, and the 2018 Existing Building Code. And all you received are the copies of the changes. And I'll just take a little moment to remind everybody that what, part of what we're adopting is the giant books that come along with this. And the 40-page documents that you received are the changes that are made to these books so that it's more acceptable to the local environments and regulatory and that sort of thing. And the publishers of this book, like I said, publish these every three years. So the action to be taken today is to authorize the county auditor to publish notice of public hearing. We're requesting that the public hearing be taken on November 19th, 2019, for the adoption of the three codes. The building inspector is here if there is kind of specific questions to what the code is doing. Any questions?
Commissioner Hiebarger?
Just a comment, this is first reading, so I have not read it all. I've got plenty of time to get that read through. There are a lot of red changes in this, and so you said that it's what the city has changed and some that we have changed, and I'm just wondering how much time went into changes? I mean, do we work on this over three years, or how do you work out when you're going to do the changes? And then how do we, how do we make people aware of what's in these changes? Because some of them are going to affect homeowners very significantly if they're not even building a home, so.
Sure. So we work on these for, I'd say approximately six months, I guess, from the time that the city kind of works through them and the time that we put them out. These have been given to the Home Builders Association for review. The other things is there's a lot of red on it, like you said, a lot of changes. If you look through the blue comments on the forums, a lot of these are changes that were made in the last code cycle, and they're just being moved forward through this code cycle to carry over those adoptions, so.
Commissioner Karski?
Kind of have a very long history with building codes, because my dad was a building inspector when I grew up and actually served on the National Board that promulgated a lot of these rules. So I, for whatever reason, strangely fascinated by it. I even got to go to the National Conventions when I was a kid. My question is, a few years ago when I was on the City Council, we were looking at not accepting or endorsing the changes that were recommended on a few areas and found out that we couldn't do it because the state fire marshal said we had to follow the code. So is that the case on a lot of these where some state office, some regulator has been given the authority to say it has to be enforced whether we want to adopt the changes or not? Are you aware of anything like that?
I guess I'm not aware of any specific situations where, like the state fire marshal. I am aware that the state law does say that you have to adopt the 2018 International Building Code if you're going to be adopting a code. So that, but it does give us the leeway to make the changes in the state law. I would have to find the section, I just read it before coming here, but I forgot exactly where it was.
So the state says if we're going to have something, we have to have this, but we can...
But we can make changes.
Can modify it?
Yep.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you.
Commissioner Barth?
It is a very long document, and the changes and exactly what they mean is difficult to really understand when you, you know, read a sentence change here and then two pages later there's a paragraph that's been deleted and then five pages after that there's a paragraph added. Seems to me in the past that we've had some statement from builders about how much the changes were going to cost, as far as if you're building a, you know, 2,000 square foot house, how much more will this cost? And I know that one of my predecessors or former colleagues, Dick Kelly, was concerned that these were being promulgated by the European Union since it says international, but I think I heard it is not. So I'm just throwing that all out there.
Commissioner?
Kevin, I remember the conversations that our former commissioners talked about. It seems to me that one of the problems that we had to make changes was the fact that the city has a home rule charter and their specific functions are different than a county who has to live with state regulations. Can you double check that?
I can double check that, yeah.
I would hate to get into an argument with the state on what we can and can't do after we've made the changes.
Sure. One comment I will make to that is that this, for example, the city has their own plumbing inspector and their own electrical inspector, and the county does not. We take those and give those inspections to the state and their adoptions of the ordinance for that, so we just do the building portion of things.
Okay. I think it would be good to have that clarified before we start making changes, and I agree that it seems like some of the changes seem like they're small and minor, but the building costs go up dramatically because of those.
Commissioner Barth?
I just happened to notice on page six that every permit issued shall become invalid 365 days after its issuance, and the previous one was 180 days after its issuance. And I know that's been an issue for people that had permits in our county where they might try to continue building something three and four years after they got their original permit, and it's interesting to see it in text here. But I'm looking forward to hearing more about this.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Karski?
The fee schedule, are we changing any of the fees?
As of right now, we are not changing fees. The county has not updated their fees since 2015, and that may come sometimes shortly after this.
Okay.
But it's not in this adoption.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing on November 19th.
Second. Motion in a second? Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to item nine, petition for compromise of lien, there are none. So that takes us to opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak about something that's not on the agenda? Good morning.
Good morning. Lori Montes, Human Services. I was here a couple of weeks ago and had let you all know that we had applied for a grant of sorts through NACO, and I just am here this morning to let you know that we were selected to be a participant in that learning cohort. So really what that means is over the next, between now and July, how many ever months that is, nine months or so, we will be collaborating with the city on primarily their housing clinic is their big program, and so that just, this kind of gives us a forum to visit with other people, both in person and through phone calls across the country that are maybe doing something similar and to get some good ideas for what that might look like here. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Well, thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Commissioner Barth?
Since you're here, did you hear me comment about these Jefferson Lyons tickets?
I did hear.
Going on with that?
I would imagine people are asking to be returned home that have been stranded here, especially since it's getting colder. We typically see an uptick in bus tickets at that time now through the holidays. A lot of times we see people who have gotten here one way or another and that they're kind of stranded here.
Are other communities buying bus tickets to send them here?
I can't state that positively, but I have heard that. Yeah, could be.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment?
Good morning. My name is Jerry Carpen. I'm one of three members on the Sherman Town Council.
Jerry, if you could just give your address, that would be helpful.
Oh, 202nd Street in Sherman, South Dakota.
Okay, thank you.
This is my home address. Last August during our 2020 budget preparations, we noticed that the Sherman property tax revenue for 2018 was noticeably below what it had been in past years and below projections. After doing some investigating, we discovered a check sent to us in July 2018 for property taxes had not been deposited in the Sherman checking account and apparently had been lost in the mail. Once a month, we receive a paper check from the county which represents an accumulation of funds from various sources that are earmarked for the town of Sherman. In the past years, on at least three occasions, checks have been lost in the mail or somehow misplaced. Normally, after something like 90 days, the county would notify us that a check had not been deposited, and we would work with them to get a new check issued. During this most recent instance of a missing check, we received no notification from the county, and it wasn't until our budget time over a year later that we realized that a property tax check from the county was missing. We worked with the county to get a new check issued. Earlier this month, I received a call from the county treasurer to discuss the missing check, and I asked why didn't the county let us know when a check had not been processed? The treasurer advised me of two things during the phone call. Number one, that I had the wrong department. I should be calling the auditor about missing checks. And number two, the county's fiscal year does not end until June 30th of each year, and that nothing would be done with any missing checks until past that time. The treasurer went on to explain that the county does not notify a payee when the check has not been processed, and at the end of the county's fiscal year on June 30th, all uncashed checks are sent to the state unclaimed property division in Pierre. It is inconceivable to me that the county would adopt such a cavalier treatment of property tax funds, and that attitude is simply not acceptable. These are monies that are forcibly taken from our residents for the maintenance and upkeep of their town under the very real threat of the loss of their home. In my opinion, the county is severely deficient in their handling and distribution of property tax monies. Our property tax money was allowed to languish in the county's checking account until we uncovered the missing check over a year later. It is imperative that the county proceed with more timely reconciliations of the county's checking account so that missing checks can be discovered within an acceptable timeframe and the funds properly distributed. I ask the commission to review its policies and procedures regarding the handling and distribution of property tax funds and institute a much better system of checks and balances. And I am very pleased to see on today's meeting that the county is making good headway in as far as check reconciliations. Any questions or anything I need to explain?
Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else for public comment today?
Well, any checks that aren't...
I think you probably should introduce yourself in your...
Pam Nelson, Minnehaha County Treasurer. Any checks that aren't cashed stay in our fund, and then after a year, the magic number is June 30th. After that, they go into the state's unclaimed property. The county's doing nothing different than they've done. Norma Erickson was treasurer here for nearly 50 years. Policies are still the same. Dolores Erickson was here for many years as well. Policies haven't changed, so I wasn't even, he's talking about appro, he's talking about money for apportionment. And those checks aren't, we don't really write any of those checks. The auditor's office does, and I think Bob's here and he has something to say about that. But we're not doing anything differently now than they've done around here for close to 100 years, so.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob List from the auditor's office. I'd like to thank Pam for volunteering me here. You know, we've had conversations, I got an email that I noticed late Friday night, so I called Mr. Carpen on Saturday and we discussed it, and I think we've got a way around it now. Cindy, you had, you had previously indicated that you were wondering why we can't send these direct deposits. It's a very complicated process, and when we send a check out, a lot of times there's a report with it, too. So what I was going to propose to Mr. Carpen is that we send the check directly to their bank if he wants that, and then the report would get mailed out to the city of Sherman. I'd like to point out, one of those checks was from 2018. You know, we reconcile every year. That's a year and a half later that they noticed this check was gone. I would suggest that that's not the county's issue. So we'd be glad to work towards resolving this if Mr. Carpen's interested in doing that, and if that bank thing is interested, if he's interested in that. As far as the, before the check would ever go to the unclaimed property division of the state of South Dakota, we would contact the payee and notify them about that.
Okay. Any questions? Commissioner Karski?
While we're reconciling our checking account now or our records, the question in my mind becomes, yes, we're reconciled, but we have checks that are outstanding when they're, at what point when they're outstanding, for how many days, months, weeks, whatever, do we take some action on it? I don't know if that's an auditor or treasurer question. I mean, we're reconciled, but we only know that those checks are outstanding. How long do we let them sit out there?
Well, that would, that would be the annual process, I'm going to imagine. Maybe I'm speaking out of turn here, that might be a treasurer's office thing, but it was mentioned June 30th was when they get notified about the, going, the check would go to the unclaimed property division unless we were told otherwise. I don't, you know, we issue hundreds of checks out of that office, you know, every month, and we do not keep track of other people's bookkeeping. The check comes out, and if they don't get it, and they notify us, we're very quick to recognize that, especially with the government entity, and turn that around after they fill out the application. So I, you know, as far as a reconciliation process goes, we don't do that in the auditor's office, but if somebody notices, you know, we send a check to them and they notice in their bookkeeping efforts that they've not received it, we would encourage them to contact us and we resolve that issue.
Yeah, you know, I think if I may, if I write a check to somebody and it's not cleared for my checking account, I, do I call that person up and say, hey, do you have my check? You know, where's the burden, I guess? I can think of a few examples where I actually have done that, where I called them up and said, hey, did you get my check? My accountant's wondering so I can close my books for the year, but you're right, you're right, thousands of checks. Where should that burden of responsibility lie for if the check didn't get there?
Well, just, I don't know the answer to that as far as statute goes personally. If I didn't get, if I put a bill into somebody and I didn't get a check, I'm going to call them up after a while and find out what's going on.
Madam Chair, just to follow on what Dean just said, I think he's talking about, you know, when he mails somebody a check and, and, you know, I, you know, I write a check to Dan Ayers or something for $1,000 and doesn't get cashed, you know, after 30 days, 45 days, I'm calling them up. And I actually had that happen, I wrote a check to Senator Johnson for an American flag over the Capitol, and it never was cashed, and I think it was destroyed in that anthrax attack out there. They burned all the mail and my check was in there. Never got the flag. But the, we all have a responsibility in this, and, you know, the recipient has to know that they've not been paid, and after a while, when you reconcile your books, you hope that that $1,000 check is cleared. Hate to have it bounce on me after I thought I had more money than I did.
And Mr. Barth, I might be speaking out of turn, and I don't know this, but, you know, with government, it may be a little bit different than the private sector, you know, as far as what we're supposed to do with that unclaimed property. So I'm not, I'm not familiar with that, that part of the law, so.
If I could just ask you one follow-up question. I thought I heard you say that before something was forwarded to unclaimed property, you did contact the recipient?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that is according to Mary Zeeb, our property tax administrator.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Thanks to all of you for coming. All right, so that takes us to item 10, under Regular Business, which is a presentation on the 80th Annual Sioux Empire Fair. Scott Wick, good morning.
Good morning, Scott Wick, Sioux Empire Fair Association. Thank you for the time this morning to present. We made it through another fair. Spacebar, right? Oh, down there. We'll start off by talking about the major contributors to the fair. We couldn't do it without of all, all of our corporate sponsors and business leaders across Sioux Falls and the surrounding area. Of course, we had our premier weekend sponsored by Premier Bank and First Premier Bank and Premier Bank Card. Monday is Billion Automotive Appreciation Day. Tuesday is Senior Citizen Day with Grand Falls Casino. Wednesday is Ag Appreciation Day through Touchstone Energy. Thursday was Campbell's Customer Appreciation Day sponsored by Campbell Supply in the last weekend, as Ag Rules Weekend that is sponsored by South Dakota Corn. Some of the notables for special events this year was the kickoff on Friday with the Keith Urban, Chris Janson concert, the Senior Citizen Appreciation Lunch, salute to our Farmer's Lunch, and then our food drive on Thursday. We do a promotion, we call it Cantastic Thursday, and with non-perishable food items brought, they get a discount ride pass for the carnival. And we were able to donate 2,500 pounds of non-perishable food to the Faith Temple Food Giveaway through that promotion on Thursday. We did have a new carnival this year. Our previous carnival decided that they no longer wanted to travel from Texas up through the Midwest. They were going to concentrate on their business down south. So we have a new carnival. It's Crabtree Amusements, a very large operator who's been around for about 50 years. 50 years ago, actually, this last August, they were here playing our fair, but they only had three games at that time. They've now evolved into one of the largest carnivals in the country with over 70 rides. It's a family operation with a lot of very good feedback, a lot of positive comments about the carnival. One of the neat things they do is it's called Magic Money. So when you drop off or bring your family out to the fair and you get your child a wristband, you, you give a machine, the kiosk some money, and it spits out a card, or they also have the option of using RFID bracelet. That way you're not handling any cash or a bunch of tickets. So for everything inside the midway, the rides, the games, and the food, they just scan that card. And of course, there's an app for that like everything else. So if you leave your child at the fairgrounds for the day, they call up and say, hey, Mom, Dad, I ran out of money. They can reload it from their phone, and that takes away all those extra hands on handling the cash, or goes from the consumer to the kiosk to the carnival office, and it's much more efficient and quicker for an audit. And I was getting reports right away at 1:00 in the morning after the carnival closed on a breakdown of all the different ride wristbands and everything and how that tied out for the day. So like I said before, we had, we had more rides and games throughout the midway. We'll have, probably have four to six more rides next year now that they've been here onsite. It's kind of hard to lay it out looking just from an aerial view and a map, but we had about the same number of rides as we've had in the past and are going to bring even more next year. And like I said, a lot of very, very positive comments. And, you know, we, we did receive a fair number of phone calls in the past about the carnival, but these guys are, like I said, they do the Louisiana State Fair, and they're very professional, very top-notch. We've definitely taken it up another level. Very generous in their, in their contract, so we offered them a three-year deal, and we signed a letter of intent on that. We're going to formalize that at the South Dakota Fairs Convention next month, and we hope to be partnered with them for a while. Numbers in the Arts Center were strong again this year. We had almost 1,500 exhibits. Classes that saw increases were needlework, arts, crafts, and hobbies, antiques, and the junior division. We did something a little bit different for our open shows and livestock this year due to the suppressed ag economy and the fact that we had heard a lot of people weren't going to be traveling due to, you know, it's, it's a fairly large cost when you have a family and four, three, four kids plus, you know, a dozen animals you bring to the fair, those entry fees add up. So in the open classes only, we waived the entry fee. So we saw an increase in exhibitors, and we also went out and solicited more sponsorship to help cover those costs. So we had a total of 225 exhibitors showing 501 head of animals from pigs, goats, sheep, and cattle, poultry, and rabbits as well. Fairgrounds improvements, one of the, one of the ones the campers see a lot is coming in from Louise Avenue and you, on the east side, our camper entrance is on the north. So we had the, a double lane asphalt that goes down to the camp entrance, and with all the rain that we get at certain times, it's nice to have a hard, hard surface road for that. Other improvements, we purchased another portable ticket booth. We repurposed one of our original Daktronic signs from 1996 above the information booth, and we repainted the north and south ticket booths. We've also been updating the PA system throughout the grounds. The lights were replaced in the north room of the expo. We did a bunch of dirt work in the dairy barns. We removed the eyesore of the dirt pile from the south entrance. That looks a lot better down there. We took down the old horse arena outside that was on the east side of the expo building with the pairing family... with the Perrin Family Rodeo Arena on the west side. There was no need for that one on the east side. So we've leveled that out and got that all improved back there and right now we're just using it for more parking. And we repainted the 4H livestock bathroom. Getting to the financials, as you can see, that's the expenses. We have the grandstand expenses, the grounds, premiums paid out for livestock, front porch and the Budweiser Beer Garden. We had entertainment just two nights, just the last Friday and Saturday. Just depends on the, on the concert you're having. We've had bands in there after the main concert curfews and there's very few people that hang around, so we've, we've held back on that. But with, with the rodeo that weekend, we decided to have a band in there and it, and it did well. But I don't think we'll ever have entertainment every night of the fair like the state fair does in our beer garden. Other expenses, when you break it out, there's the entertainment and all the grounds and admissions, going through concessions, admin, advertising, all the expenses in the competitive exhibits and horse shows and of course, the horticulture and FFA. We had total expenses this year of $1,288,835. And on the revenue side, admissions and camping was $535,000, beverage and concessions $338,000, carnival $267,000, sponsorships $151,000 and competitive exhibits brought in $131,000 for revenue of $1,423,571 with a net fair income of 100 and, almost $135,000. Now, this is down from last year. We, we had eight beautiful, perfect days coming into the fair. The last Friday when we had the comedian is when we had the rain and the drizzle and we only had about 2,500 people attend the Jeff Foxworthy event. And in the past with Fluffy the comedian, Gabriel Iglesias, we had over 15,000 the first year and over 12,000 the second. So Friday was a buzzkill for lack of a better term with that rain. We did experience a lot of lightning and some weather, so we had to shut the carnival down early that night as well. So you build up and build up and then it kind of, you gain, gain, gain and unfortunately in this business, it was not all, but, but a lot of it was taken away on Friday. Our, our deposit for that Friday was down over $140,000 compared to last year. And when you're outside and you're in South Dakota, you're at the mercy of the weather. So Mother Nature will affect you at one or two times during the fair. That's pretty much a guarantee. So we were very pleased with the eight strong days we had, the successes we had with the new carnival and the success of all the concerts and some of the new formats we've done. So it was another good year and we're, we're just, every year we think we get a little smarter and learn a few more things and keep building for the next fair. Our attendance, we were, we were on a trajectory to, to probably have a record year, but that Friday really took a lot of wind out of our sails. So we still had, with all the other days, some were up, some were down, we still showed a, a modest increase of 2.3%. And I didn't entertain any questions at this time.
Questions?
Gerald, I wouldn't make any, I don't have any questions, but I think with the adversity of the weather for one evening and frankly, new carnival, new improvements, some increases in building and maintenance kind of funding, I think that frankly, you guys did a really good job with the fair and that having attendance up 2.3% is pretty admirable when you do, you did have some of those issues. I just want to thank you and your staff for what you have done to make that an improvement and certainly to the county's staff that helps with building and maintenance and repair work. I think this fair turned out very positive, so thank you for your work.
Thank you for your comments and thank you to the, to Minnehaha County and the commissioners for all the support that you give us throughout the year. And working with Mark has been just a, a, a real blessing, very organized. We're on a schedule for maintenance, you know, whenever I give him a call, he's, he's there, calls back. So everybody that's out there and the users and the, all the events that are repeats are seeing what's happening from the lighting, I mean, something that we may take for granted, but when people come in to the flea market, they're like, they saw the lighting and it's just now it's nice and bright and there's no dark areas and plus it's, it's efficient, more efficient, their LED lights. So all the improvements from the asphalting to the painting of the grandstand and the tuck pointing and the roof work, we're, we're catching up and it's, it's, it's much needed. So we, we thank you very, very much for your support.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I was out several times too and it just, you know, commend your staff that was, it was clean, it was fun, it was safe. I went to the Keith Urban concert. We got in quickly and got out easily and, and always felt like things were well handled, very well handled.
Yeah, the safety, we did, with, with the contract for the Keith Urban concert, we had to wand and do bag searches and have a bomb dog there because, I mean, he's a, an A-lister act. And then with the atmosphere, some unfortunate things happening in the Sioux Falls area during that week, we implemented the wand-ing and the searches from Tuesday on of the fair and it's something that we're budgeting for and we're going to do from here on out. Unfortunately, it's just the world we live in now and we're going to have to continue to do it. Couple of weeks prior to the fair is when the, the Premier Center announced their new bag policy with the size of their bags and the clear bags and all that. So with all the other venues that are, that are going to be having the heightened security, we will as well for, for the fair and obviously any other events that we have out there that we do ourselves.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you. Thank you to you and your staff and, and, you know, I, I don't disagree that the safety issues are paramount for everyone and so I think people understand and are, the folks that are trying to follow the rules are very, I think, open to, to a little bit of inconvenience to make sure that they feel safe.
There was a lot of positive compliments and hanging outside the main gate after a concert curfew or after the carnival, it shut down, a lot of families and parents were, would come up and shake law enforcement's hands, give them a hug, say, hey, you know what, we understand, I'm glad you're doing it, thank you. And we got better every night and the efficiencies were there. I had, like I said, we had to wand for Keith Urban and for some reason on Friday, I had looked up the, the wands on the, on the internet and we borrowed the wands from the Premier Center while they, obviously Amazon shows up on everything. But I, I ordered six wands on Friday just to have, not, and, and we, and boom, we had to use them on, on Tuesday. So we're going to get some more, so we have them and train staff and we've got a good plan going forward. So again, thank you very much for all your support and we're busy working on the fair and all the other events.
All right, well, thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay, so that takes us to item 11, which is consider a resolution to restore tax deed number 2606, RDID 64111 to former owner of record, Auditor Litz.
Good morning again. Bob Litz from the auditor's office. Minnehaha County holds under tax deed proceedings, tax deed on RDID 64111, tax deed number 2606. At the October 1st, 2019 Commission meeting, the commission authorized this property to be placed on the 2019 tax deed sale. On October 25th, the Minnehaha County Treasurer received payments on behalf of Corey, Corey Lee, RDID 64111 in the amount of $9,124.85. This represents all taxes, assessments, interest and costs owed on the tax deed. The property was taken off the 2019 tax deed sale at the last minute. What I'm looking for here today is the action to approve the resolution to restore the property to the former owner of record according to SDC L-10-25-41.
Make a motion to approve that.
Motion in a second. Any comments, questions for Auditor Litz? If not, roll call vote, please.
Barth? Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Very good. I'd also like this body to know that we did conduct the tax deed sale Saturday morning at 10 o'clock and I will have a report and two resolutions following up with that next week.
Okay, thank you very much.
Bring the cash.
Okay, that takes us to item 12, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning? Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, I skipped the planning and zoning meeting last night, went to Hartford for a bicycle meeting, but Scott tells me things went pretty well. Was the usual concerns about change. There was a plan to move several eligibilities to a, a new location and the neighbors were concerned about people cutting down trees on the land that the other people own. I mean, I don't want my views spoiled. I don't own that land, but don't cut down the trees. That's part of my life here. Anyway, so that, I think they resolved. There's also a, a location at 26th Street and Highway 101, which they turned down and suggested that the city annex that location as opposed to having it approved in the county. That's my report.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, if not, it takes us to new business. Is there any new business? Any old business? Commissioner Barth.
I'm counting the bike path at Wall Lake as being old business because we have discussed it before. We've had the proponents in here and I went to the meeting last night at the high school as did Mr. Baumeister over there. The, they had a fairly good turnout. They had a, a very nice PowerPoint type presentation and the same kind of discussion we get with like the highway department or CCOG with easels set up with proposed maps and comment cards for questions and stuff like that. And while there were folks that had concerns, I, I don't think that they was, there was anything that would preclude this project from moving forward. I did suggest that if they needed a governmental entity to propose or to co-sign on a grant application, that we might be willing to do that. I know that at CCOG with the UDC, we've built bike paths in Harrisburg and, and other places and I think this is right up that alley. The people moving forward with it are pretty, pretty excited about it. They have a, an engineer who's worked on bike path around Lake Campeska and, you know, they have the same kinds of issues. You just have to work with people to find a way around their concerns. Anyway, it was a good meeting.
Thank you. Okay, any other old business? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming, everyone.